The regular town council meeting town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Monday, August 20th, 2018. Get the roll, please.
Councilman McGuire.
Present.
Councilwoman Wright.
Here.
Councilwoman Elrod.
Here.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Clancy.
Present.
Mayor Bunch.
Here. All present accounted for. Let's see, who are we going to pick on tonight? Charlie, you want to lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, public announcements. Everybody see these machines back in the corner? Don't forget to mail them in if you got them. Don't forget to come do it if you hadn't got them in the mail. Call to the public.
I have one thing to say. Nina Spitzer is here. And Nina did a great job of coordinating our tourist bureau at Frontier Town, and now she's taking on greater responsibilities seriously. Thank you, Nina.
That's right. I didn't mean this lightly. Anybody else? All right, call to the public.
Nina Spitzer, please.
Oh, surprise, surprise!
Nina Spitzer, Cave Creek resident. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Could you put the microphone towards you, please? Thank you.
Okay.
Perfect.
Good evening. I'm happy to announce that our Cave Creek Tourism Bureau is set to open on October 1st, Monday. I'm a volunteer assigned to coordinating the operations and my fellow volunteers. As I understand, this project is being supported from the Economic Development Budget. What an excellent idea. Thank you. Located across from Town Hall, our Cave Creek Tourism Bureau will be easily accessible by visitors as they drive into town. Our wonderful team of volunteers will welcome them. And then visitors will leave with information, maps, menus, brochures, and a warm feeling about our town. They'll enjoy Cave Creek and leave with arms full of fun purchases, fond memories of inns, restaurants, bars, and shops. Plus, the memories visitors take with them will inspire them to return. For Cave Creek, that means additional revenue. So, yes, supporting our Cave Creek Tourism Bureau with economic development funds is a very smart idea. Currently, our tourism bureau has a team of about 20 experienced volunteers passionate about Cave Creek. That's fantastic. However, we can use more. Please consider volunteering for a three-hour shift. What a great way to get a feel for what our visitors think about our town. And please share information about this volunteer opportunity with family and friends. They can get the application for volunteering online. They can contact me with any questions they have. Also, please, if you could help me by encouraging Cave Creek merchants to drop their brochures off at Town Hall by September 15th in order to be included in our opening display. Been trying to get around to all of them, but I might miss a few. Finally, please mark Saturday, October 6th down on your calendars. That's the date of our tourism bureau's grand opening celebration. We invite you, fellow residents, visitors and merchants also, to stop by and see what we're all about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nina, we're online.
If you go online, it says tourism information.
To the...
Microphone, please. This is recorded.
We're going out live on the Internet. That's why there's so many empty seats here.
Yeah, there's a section on our site that Brian's put in that says tourism information right on the front page. And click on that, and it takes you to a page for Cave Creek Tourism Bureau where there's an application for volunteers. And also, I'm asking that any merchant that participates fills out a form, just so we know who's involved. So, yeah, on the site, or they can call me. Okay? Thank you.
What are the hours of operation?
10 to 4.
Thank you.
The first shift is 10 to 1, and then 1 to 4. And that will be seven days a week during season. And then when it gets hot and steamy next summer, we trim it down. So, any shift you want, we can work it out.
Thank you.
Do we have any more?
All right.
Counsel request for future agenda items.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wright?
I have. Well, it's not necessarily future. Well, maybe it is. The S U P for Silvermans, when can we expect it? It's a question probably to staff as well. When could we see it? And the S U P for the tractor-trailer wall, where are we in that process? If we could have it brought to us soon, so that we can understand that it still isn't built.
May I go now? Thank you. And I'd like to have an agenda item brought forward to give us information about the tiny houses that may be coming to our area. What agenda? We might need some special ordinances, codes, something to address their needs, special needs, anything like that. So, I would like staff to bring this forward, anything they found in other towns, to get us ready for that.
All right.
By a certain date, time, expiration.
By next meeting, yeah. Please.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Wright. Tiny, could you elaborate?
We learned about a newspaper article this week.
Oh, I didn't see it. So, could you just take 30 seconds and elaborate?
30 seconds. They're little but microscopic houses, literally. You could put on a trailer and take them down the road, and you travel with them. And they're quite often on wheels. So...
We can have a discussion. I think that's that. She's explaining.
Oh, did you?
You're not going to answer, though.
No.
But anyway, very, very small homes that are very easy to live in. But they come with special needs sometimes. We need to be sure that we're ready for it, so we don't end up like we did in the behavioral treatment centers, not prepared for what's coming forward.
We're now going a little bit too far.
Yes.
Can I say thank you?
No. Not a word. Mr. Vice Mayor, the law changed three weeks ago, and the fine now is $2,500.
Whoa.
I paid, and you paid.
I take it back, all of it.
$2,500?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, we can't talk about that.
$2,500.
Town manager.
Since Nina spoke at Call to the Public, I'd just like to thank her. She's extremely enthusiastic and organized, and has really kind of taken the bull by its horn and jumped into this both feet first. And she has gotten so many volunteers right up front and organized this. As she mentioned, we do have some funding from the economic development, although it's really limited funds that are needed at this time. There's some improvements with painting and lighting in rental space across the street, and some signage supplies. We're putting in some brochure holders and a counter and chair and desk, things like that. So, we're not spending a lot of money on that. But she has, with a little bit of help from Brian, we kind of got a format for the Cave Creek Corner newsletter, so that the businesses can contribute and the town can contribute information and kind of get that communication between the town and the business community. So, she's taking that on and trying to get that out the first of every month. Secondly, elections. It's obvious here, we have early voting going on this week, Monday through Thursday, just regular office hours, 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And there is a drop box for anyone who has received a ballot by mail. You can come in and just drop it off. You don't have to wait in any line. And then on Election Day will be the same thing, except the hours are 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And you can come in with a ballot you've received in the mail and drop that in the box here, or vote in person. The permit was issued today for a fireworks display, the fireworks extravaganza that Harold's applied for. It will be held on Sunday, September 2nd, over the Labor Day weekend. Danny was able to get permission from a couple of the neighbors who are in the fallout area to get permission to waive any liability that they're be responsible for their property. And Rural Metro will be on-site for emergency services. Our staff will be there to inspect not only the site and making sure it's clear according to the permit that's been issued, but will be there as well during the firework display to make sure everything goes off, hopefully without a hitch, barring any kind of unforeseen weather circumstances, high winds, things like that. So, kind of pray for the good weather and not too much wind. And that's all I have for right now, Mayor.
Can we ask a question to that?
Yes.
Real quick. On the economic budget for, how much was that?
How much?
For the information center across the street. Forest Center.
There's no specific set budget that was put into the budget. There's a total overall budget for economic ballot.
No, I understand that. But you said it wasn't very much. So, do you...
Oh, no. We have done some painting. It was like $100 worth of paint. We're having a counter built that is going to be donated.
Okay.
As well as, there's a sort of a panel where the, we're buying the plastic holders that would hold brochures. But the mounting is donated, the lighting with fans were like Home Depot, $100 each. There were two of them, so really not a lot. The signage, we're working through the signage we use for Taste of Cave Creek, and he gives us a good price on that. And we'll utilize during the busy days our own mobile signage, you know, Tourism Bureau here. What do you call that? Message board. The message board, so we can move that and have some signage on the building itself.
And with regards to the, they're going to do a newsletter, and that's a hard copy newsletter versus putting it on the Internet? Both?
It's on the Internet.
Internet is Internet-based.
Email, yes. Yes, he's emailing. We can put that on our town website as well.
Yeah, I did. When she said newsletter, I was under the impression...
You can give it out.
Councilman Smith.
Ma'am, Ms. Town Manager, I want to congratulate you on the effectiveness of the white noise machine that you had installed in here. I have a feeling that anybody out there that's trying to listen to this tonight is going to be going, "What the hell is going on?"
Mayor, Councilman, you can thank the new county...
I meant heck.
The new county recorder, that all this process changed and they just showed up with all this equipment. So, it may be efficient, but we weren't exactly aware of the noise that would be in the facility during public meetings.
I used it today, and it was very effective.
Okay.
The Russians can hear everything.
All right, moving right along to the consent agenda. We have one item on there tonight, approval of July 2nd, 2018 regular council meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
Can I make a comment first about the...
You certainly may.
Much as I love verbatim minutes, in two short paragraphs on the one that we just reviewed, the town manager and I said "um" 10 times and "ah" nine times. I believe it should be possible to remove those little things that people put when they have two sentences, and then they put something in the middle like "um," "ah." Can we do that at least? Cleanse it a little bit?
Can we do that?
And you and I aren't the worst, by the way.
I know. I've been told.
We could do it like a Western Union message and say, "Stop!" after each sentence. All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Some of them.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, moving on to general agenda. Item number one, presentation and possible council discussion of the Cox Communications Update 2018 presented by Jamie Boyett, Senior Communications Liaison of Cox Communications.
Mayor, actually, Julie is here.
Okay, well...
And so she'll be presenting.
Okay, so what's the correct name then?
Julia.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Jamie Boyett. And I used to get confused a lot by folks, because my name used to be Julia Bogan, and so everybody confused us. I would like to pass this along, just some leave behind, some business cards, some materials from the council afterwards. But thank you so much for having me today. We have some pretty interesting things to update you with. So, I'm so glad Jamie, Jamie actually arranged this meeting for me, so that's, yeah, no surprises she was on there. Is there a clicker for me, or should I?
Thank you. All right.
Sometimes it even works.
Is it helpful if you point to one or the other? There we go. All right. So, yeah, we're here to talk a little bit about how Cox Communications invests in Arizona. And you guys can hear me okay? All right. So, a lot of folks don't know this, but we're a family-owned business. We've been serving the Phoenix metro area in southern Arizona for more than 20 years, which is coincidentally how long I've been employed by Cox Communications. Been serving most of these areas since 1996. We're one of Arizona's major employers. We employ more than 3,200 employees in Arizona. And when I first joined Cox, we were just a cable company. That's all we had. And then shortly thereafter, I think we added telephone and then Internet. And so I was there when we launched Internet, and that was back in 2001. And it is actually 1,000 times faster today than it was in 2001. We very proudly offer a low-cost, this is really important to me, a low-cost, high-speed Internet option to qualifying families. But I won't spend a lot of time on that now, because I have a slide on that later. We also encourage all of our employees to find their passion and give back to their communities. And our employees actually volunteer more than 35,000 hours annually, every year. Annually, every year. Sorry, that was redundant. Community investment. On top of that, Cox Charities supports the Valley's nonprofits to the tune of $25.7 million per year. That's in cash and in kind. And our impact, so we did an economic survey a few years ago. We just had it updated not too long ago. And our operations account for, they generate $110 million in state, county, and local taxes every year. So, overall, Cox represents $3 billion of Arizona's economy, and the Cox family continues to bet on Arizona's success by investing another billion dollars over the next five years into the network of the future. So, the network of the future, what we're really talking about here is that when people are using their high-speed Internet and all the devices now that require Wi-Fi, we've got Wi-Fi crockpots, we've got Wi-Fi thermostats, we've got Wi-Fi washers and dryers. There are just so many things that are popping up in homes now that require Wi-Fi. And so, what we're seeing is that the demand for speed is tripling like every year. And so, just to keep up with that, over the next 10 years, the Cox family is going to spend a billion dollars to create the network of the future. And that transformation will allow us to provide the products and services that our customers and the businesses need at the speeds they need, at the speeds they need to operate. And this will include some construction activity. The service disruptions may occur over the next 12 months, but we will communicate with you and our residents prior to any of that scheduled work. In the end, 99% of homes in our Cox Arizona footprint will have access to gig-speed Internet. So, what this really produces for us is an opportunity to talk more about smart cities and smart regions. Smart technology is going to allow users to get really smart with the things that matter to communities, especially municipalities and the ways that you manage these things, because you're responsible for looking at how energy is used, how buildings use those energies. This smart technology is going to impact how you look at education, healthcare, infrastructure, transportation, and security. And all in all, these benefits are going to help increase revenue for municipalities. They're going to decrease your costs and increase that revenue. It's going to create greater governmental efficiencies and a better citizen experience, as well as better safety for your citizens. So, this is one of our newest products and service lines. It's Cox 2M, which actually stands for Cox 2 Machine. And this sort of calls back to the previous slide. It's just ways that we can help municipalities better manage their fleets, waste management, their cities, their campuses, asset tracking. Asset tracking is actually how we came upon Cox 2M, because we have, the Cox family doesn't just own Cox Communications and Cox Business, but we own Manheim Auto, Kelly Blue Book, and Autotrader. And so, we have a big footprint in the automotive business as well. And at Manheim Auto, they run huge auctions with just hundreds and hundreds of cars. And they were having trouble finding those cars and getting them lined up in a timely basis for their auctions. And so, they developed some technology that helped them get to those cars and bring them to the lot faster. And as they did that, and they launched it, they discovered, you know, we think maybe cities might find this smart technology helpful as well. And that is how Cox 2M capabilities was born. I think I've kind of explained this, so I won't spend any more time there. All right, so, part of the smart city network includes small cells. And Cox has been deploying small cells for, on behalf of wireless carriers for a couple of years now, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, and others, especially Verizon. And while we don't operate a wireless network, we do have the necessary infrastructure to power these small devices. We don't often notice these devices in our communities, and a lot of that, their stealthy placement, is really a direct result of the communications that we have with municipal stakeholders. And so, we always want to thank you for working with us, because if you don't notice them, it's because a lot of work went into that. One of our newest products is home automation. So, what we discovered a few years, I think it was about six years ago, seven years ago now, that we launched our Cox Home Life Home Security Services. And we discovered that aside from security, our customers just really enjoyed the home automation piece. They enjoyed knowing when a door opened or closed. They could see it right on their phone. They enjoyed knowing when Little Suzie got home from school. They enjoyed figuring out how Fido was getting on the counter while they were gone to get those snacks. And so, we decided to sort of pare down that home security product into just a home automation product. It's really going gangbusters. Our customers are loving it, so they can skip the security and get right to the home automation. It's a lower cost. The product, it sets alerts and controls for parts of the home, like light bulbs, thermostats. It starts at $20 a month. You can automatically turn on lights, change the temperature, and best of all, it's just a lower cost than the home security product. You get a free starter kit worth $350 with a bunch of devices that I'll show you on the next slide, and there's no contract. And at any time, you can upgrade to the home security product seamlessly. So, here are just a few of the devices that we offer. You've got the HD cameras, you've got sensors for windows and doors, you've got remote accessibility, so if you've got a smartphone, you can look at your cameras right on your phone at any time, wherever you are. And you can control those devices right from your phone. So, here's another surprising fact that a lot of people don't know, but Cox has been investing in telemedicine since 2015. The product testing is just wrapping up in our central region. And these services, we are hoping that these services will allow seniors and other vulnerable citizens to live at home more confidently as they age. Very much like a life alert system, various sensors send alerts to designated family members in the event of a fall or when no motion is detected over specified periods of time. The product will bring many customers and families greater peace of mind and allow more people to recover from medical events at home, say surgeries and things like that. It's going to reduce the chance of having the need to be rehospitalized again in a lot of cases, because remote patient monitoring can promise all of these things. Not only is it going to mitigate rising healthcare costs, but it's going to mitigate provider shortages, which we all see in our crystal balls. It'll allow more seniors to age gracefully at home. It'll reduce the rate of hospitalization and increase patient confidence and well-being. I talked a little bit about Manheim Auto in Arizona. Again, this slide is just to inform everyone that the Cox family involves more than just cable, more than phone, more than Internet, more than security for that matter. We have a big footprint in automotive. And so, this, again, it's Manheim Auto Auctions, it's Kelly Blue Book, it's Autotrader. These are all really proud members of the Cox family. And so, you might have heard that we passed some licensing this past year. And the really, the thing that I want to highlight on here is that through the end of that, the cities have retained their ability to collect up to 5% in license fees and totally maintain control of the right-of-ways. This also allows Cox to continue to innovate in a really competitive marketplace. You know, back when I started, Hulu didn't exist, Amazon TV didn't exist. There's so many ways that you can stream content today. And so, by sort of stripping down the regulations that in some ways didn't make a lot of sense anyways, because these franchise terms, a lot of those terms were already dictated by state law years and years ago. So, it just allows all of us to do business together in a more streamlined fashion, and it allows Cox to concentrate on innovating for the communities it serves. So, here is one of the slides that we're really proud about. I talked earlier about having a slide about this. This is about connect to compete. This is about having, offering a low-cost alternative or option to qualifying families so that they can access high-speed Internet. High-speed Internet is absolutely vital to families these days. It's vital to students in school, it's vital to teenagers applying for jobs, other family members applying for jobs, pursuing education opportunities online. And so, Cox is really, really proud to be a partner in this space. We didn't actually come up with this program, but we are one of the most active providers in this program. So, what it is, connect to compete, families with at least one student grades K through 12, living in their household, can qualify for low-cost, high-speed Internet service for only $9.95 a month. That's no contract, no deposit, free modem, free installation. The way they qualify is if they participate in the National School Lunch Program, SNAP, or they live in public housing. And since 2014, we've helped more than 70,000 individuals in Arizona gain access to high-speed Internet. And Cox is constantly partnering with schools and communities for more enrollment opportunities. So, thanks to partnerships with Valley Metro and others, we even get to send families home with a refurbished desktop computer or a laptop computer. And in some cases, this is the first computer this family has seen in their homes. So, again, we're just, we're really proud to operate in this space and be one of the most active providers in this space. We would love to partner with more schools or businesses in your community. Maybe there are businesses you know out there that have... Maybe there are businesses you know out there that have refurbished computers that we can place in the homes of these students and these families. Because digital literacy creates opportunity for us all. It's good for the state, it's good for our people. And so we've got some information in the folder that I'm leaving behind. If you guys have any ideas, we would love to get creative with you. So because we know we're not going to be able to offer that low-cost, high-speed internet service to every family, maybe they don't qualify, or maybe they don't live in our footprint, we want to make sure that they have opportunities as well. And so we offer these technology centers. It's a place where we can provide safe, accessible technology for all members of the community. We currently operate, I want to say about 34 locations, most of them being Boys and Girls Clubs. And I checked before coming out here, and over by Desert Ridge, the Vestar branch of the Boys and Girls Club is opening a new location that will have a Cox Innovation Lab that will be open, I believe, in October or November. And that will be the closest one to Cave Creek. I think I've talked a lot about community initiatives here, and the thing that I want to just impart before I end this presentation is that obviously Cox invests in the communities it serves. We do this through a variety of sponsorships and grants and a lot of other ways as well. But if there are places that you think Cox can participate at a greater level with you, we definitely want to hear from you. We're always willing to explore those opportunities with you. And that's all I have for this presentation, and I would welcome any questions from you or your audience.
I've got one. I don't normally ask questions I don't already know the answer to. It's not healthy. But because we've got an economy of scale issue in this town with the large lots, and how many people in here actually have Cox available in their neighborhoods?
Me.
Oh, we've got one.
One, over there.
That's an issue.
Okay, yeah.
You know, I appreciate your presentation, but if the service isn't available, it doesn't do us an awful lot of good to know all the good things you're doing statewide when we are falling short. I don't mean to pick on you, I just...
No, of course.
You know, I've heard these presentations before, and I don't think much has changed.
You know, there are pockets throughout our entire service footprint that experience that same sort of pain. And it's not that the services aren't available, we will build to them, but it is extremely costly to build to them.
That's the economy of scale, yeah.
Right, right. And so we do look to the residents to perhaps get together and find a way to help cover those costs. And if they get together and organize and bring some solutions to the table, we're certainly willing to look at that as well. I do know that your location right next door, I forgot to mention this earlier, I know that you guys have been looking for some Cox Business Services through our internet service, through Cox Business. And I talked to somebody this morning, they said that they are in the process of drafting permits right now. You should see them by the end of this week or early next week for construction to begin so that those services will be available by the end of this year.
Thank you.
I also wanted to mention to Honorable Vice Mayor that if you, since you have our services, you might check out HGTV. It happens to be my favorite channel, I'm quite the junkie when it comes to HGTV, and everything you could possibly ever want to know about tiny homes is on that channel.
Yeah, no kidding.
I'd just like to pay you and Cox a compliment because we did not have Cox in our development, but the conduit was in for it, but not utilized. And because of a subdivision just to the east of us called Hidden Rock, that became active and alive. And there, we complained just month after month for years. And finally, after it went hot in Hidden Rock, the distance was short enough to make sense, and we guaranteed Cox a large percentage of our homeowners would switch, which they did. And you had a new program where we dealt with one person, and I don't recollect the name, but it was excellent program. He was excellent to deal with, and everybody enjoys it.
I'm glad to hear that.
So kudos.
Thank you, I'm glad to hear that. I hope we can repeat that success through other parts of Cave Creek.
All right, well, there is public comment on this. Do we have any forums on this one? Well, I appreciate your presentation, and I hope you don't feel too beat up.
Not at all, thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving right along, agenda item number two, presentation council discussion of the quarterly utility briefing to council, including matters listed in the town of Cave Creek water policy, best management practices and project updates. I bet I know who's going to talk to us now.
Let's see. Mayor, council members. We're here to talk about my second annual quarterly report, and we're going to spend a considerable amount of time talking about some of the projects that have taken place or started and are in progress since the last report, which I believe was April. I would like to point out on the title screen that, and we'll talk about this project a little more in depth as we go along, that on the right side, the right picture there is the Westec Package Water Treatment Unit that got into town two weeks ago, Monday, to provide additional water for the town during the refurbishment of the filters. And that's what it looks like. Still can't hear? And I just wanted to go back and reiterate what we had talked about in the first program about the CAP water delivery through the Central Arizona Project Canal, 180 miles from Lake Havasu, and that the water is pumped from the CAP canal 13 miles to our town. Just wanted to add, this slide was made up last week, about Wednesday or Thursday. Friday, we had a pump station two issue where we've got four pump stations, one on the canal and three subsequent pump stations that deliver water to the treatment plant. And the canal went down, or the pump station went down, and we had a flooding event in the pump station. And although we talk a lot about benchmarking and efficiencies in operation and metrics, I'd like you to know that we have eight people who responded to the event on Friday morning. The pump station was down from Friday morning at 7:30 until Friday afternoon at 6:30, at which time it came back up at 80%. And the pump station motors were returned today, and the pump station is back up to full operation as of 1 o'clock today. But that's a benchmark, that's a metric. We have eight people who are dedicated employees of the town of Cave Creek, and they were available and on call and ready to work through the weekend to do what they had to do. We talked about best management practices, and one of the best management practices that we've implemented in the past three months has resulted in the manufacture of the Westec Package Unit, or the Westec Filters, needing to be scheduled for refurbishment. We called out a Westec technician in June of this year, actually July, as part of our best management practices to get a feel for what would it take to get these filters refurbished? What parts do we need? What's the inventory for parts? What's the delivery time for the parts? And the result of that was is that we became involved in an expedited filter rehabilitation project for the month of August. So that was the forethought that went into that process and the forethought that needs to be implemented on a day-to-day basis, especially when you're running a potable water system that's got to be up and running. So that's what I consider to be one of the advantages of best management practices. Again, the core product for the water and wastewater system is to run as an enterprise fund, fully supported by the water fees and wastewater fees. We'd like to be fully supporting that best management practice in the core product. We're obviously moving towards, we're getting closer on the water side, but we're not probably going to see that in the wastewater side for at least a few years. But that's the goal. And the best management practices, benchmarking is one of those best management practices. And we talked about this four months ago when we wanted to set up some metrics for the employees who work in the utility operation, the wastewater treatment plant, the water treatment plant, the mechanics, et cetera. And the most important factor in the benchmarking activity is obviously to compare our utility operation with a utility of similar size and complexity. Because if you don't do that, you don't really have an apples-and-apples comparison of that. And that's what we're striving towards. A few project updates, quite a bit has happened in the last four months. We've got, I mentioned the water treatment filter rehab project. The schedule for the filter rehab was we were going to originally do a filter, one or two filters this winter. That schedule got expedited because of the condition of the filters that was determined by the Westec technical team. The project started on the first week in August. The mobile unit, water treatment unit showed up that day. We had pre-ordered the parts and the filter media, and that project is going to be completed on the 31st of August. We're into our third filter, and this happens to be the third week of the month, or almost the third week of the month. So we're going to refurbish all four filters in a 30-day time period. The SCADA, the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition Project, was, we interviewed engineers back in late April, early May, and settled on an engineer who could come in and phase this project through three separate phases. Stage one is about 80% complete now. We had a few meetings in the past two weeks, looking at the stage one recommendations for what type of SCADA, what HMI, human-machine interface programs we would like to implement. And we'll be making those decisions in the next couple months. And stage two, which is the complete design specification phase, will begin in late September, early November at the latest. We anticipate that's going to take three to four months, followed by construction, which will take another six to seven months at the longest. So we could have new SCADA by late spring, early summer, easily. And that commissioning and target date of May is, it's a solid date. I feel very comfortable. It may happen earlier than that. The CAP booster station upgrades, we talked about that during the budget process, what is important as far as CAP booster stations, and I think we saw that on Friday. We had a mechanical seal, it's about a $1,000 part, that basically shut the booster station down for four days. And although we had the mechanical seal, we didn't have enough extra motors that would allow us to just simply replace a motor. And the next question is, how many motors would it take? Well, we'd need probably 10 or 12. So it's a risk assessment, how many motors do you want on the shelf, and how long are the motors good for on the shelf, and are they able to perform adequately if you've got them sitting in a protected environment, et cetera, et cetera. But anyhow, getting a rebuilt motor, a brand-new motor, is 24 to 48 hours. We probably would have had it within 24 hours if the failure hadn't happened on a Friday. So we got a little crisis because of Saturday, Sunday deliveries. We interviewed engineers last week, beginning of last week, and chose an engineer for the booster station upgrade project. We had two very qualified engineers, and the engineer chosen is going to begin working and, well, we'll be bringing that to you for your approval within the next two to three weeks so that design on the booster station upgrades can be initiated. The engineer that we chose feels that they can do that project, they can engineer the project in 60 to 90 days, probably closer to 60, followed by construction of about a year with some prep, they'll have to be some pre-purchased equipment, and they'll have to be coordination, maintenance of plant operations, MOPOs that'll take place as the construction goes from one booster station to the next. The contractor will mobilize once and complete all three of them at the same swoop in that year process. It may be faster than a year, but that's a realistic construction schedule. The Neri and Rockaway Reservoir Project is one that we haven't talked to you about. During the course of the summer, we identified that there was very little mixing in the large reservoirs. We had stratification levels in each of the reservoirs, and as a result, our chlorine residual, our disinfectants, it was difficult to get representative readings in those tanks. And so we determined that we need to get some tank mixing. So the tank mixing project is, we'll bring to you, it's not a high-dollar item. It was part of the CIP budget, but it's something that we're going to try and get done throughout the winter. At least those two tanks be completed before next summer so that we have a homogeneous mixture, so when we take a sample, that's what it is. That's the goal. The Rancho Manjana Wastewater Lift Station, that study is still, it's been a backburner item for about 60 to 90 days. We'll be bringing it back to you within the next 60 days. It's a project that has to get done. We've got to identify the capacity of the station currently, any future capacity necessary, and what will be needed to upgrade that wastewater lift station to accommodate all the future flows, at least the flows for the next five to 10 years. So we'll bring that back to you before the Thanksgiving holiday period. Non-revenue water analysis. I'm going to turn this over to Madison because she's got some really up-to-date information that she's better versed than I am.
All right. So I went to a few training sessions, and WIFA and ADWR had a water loss program available for anyone to kind of apply. I think only about seven or 10 of us were accepted out of 120 applicants. The kickoff meeting took place on August 13th. Pretty much what they're going to be doing is taking a look at all of our, compiling all of our data and our, having us sit with free training and technical assistance from national water loss experts. They're going to go through the whole process and validate with the AWWA M36 Water Auditing Program. And this is going to help us come to an outcome and guide us for our next steps for more cost-effective water loss management. So kind of help us figure out where we're losing our water, how can we fix that, how can we benefit our data systems, not just like compiling it into an Excel spreadsheet, but really being able to figure out where it's coming from, where it's going, and having more of a reasonable accounting system for our water. Same with our GIS Will Serve data projects. I am going to be working with GIS methodology and being able to put all of our Will Serves that are active, what's committed for the future, being able to track every account, any accounts that are having high leaks, things like that, so that I can have a better map of what's out there and what's not.
Rancho Manjana Golf Course Lake Lining and Evaporation Control Project. As a follow-up to Madison's non-revenue water project and the recent information that we put together, it's very obvious to us that we have one large user who accounts for a large percentage of non-revenue water, and that is the Rancho Manjana Golf Course. We met with their management two months ago and talked about what we could do as a town and what they could do as an entity to help us with the non-revenue water that goes to that facility. And currently, we have a significant amount of water that goes there on a daily basis. There's the entire flow of the Town of Cave Creek wastewater treatment plant that goes there. And in addition to that, there's the flows that come from the water treatment plant that are used for backwashing, and at times, we have to use some raw, untreated CAP water. It's obvious to us that the largest challenge to us for non-revenue water and water loss reductions will come from that. It's not a secret. A large amount of water goes there. A large amount of water goes there every day, every month. And it's much larger than any leaking six-inch meter or eight-inch meter in any town. So the focus of, as Madison gets into the numbers, it will be a significant amount of focus on how do we manage that process, and how do we get that down into a reasonable range? We know that AWWA wants the non-revenue water to be less than 10%. And we know that the current percentage is around 18 or 19%. And we also know that about 6% to 8% or 9% of that is going to the Rancho Manjana Golf Course. So those are the challenges we've got. We've got to figure out how do we reduce that daily delivery, and how do we cut back on evaporation losses? How do we minimize seepage, pond seepage, et cetera, et cetera? It's a big job. There's 180, 77 to 111 or 117 inches of evaporation a year that goes up into the air, and that's about 2% right there. So it doesn't take very long. The number's right in front of us. We know what the problem is. There's 2% of that water that, it goes into the top lake, it gets metered at the bottom lake, and we lose 2% to the clouds. So in order to minimize that, there's got to be some innovative decisions made about how do we eliminate that evaporation? How do we minimize the seepage? And we talk to them about pond lining, et cetera. And I think we're supposed to get back to them in a month or six weeks to reconfigure the schedule. Questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Mr. Kaler.
Yes, sir.
The pump station number two that went down, I assume that prevented water from going up the 16-inch pipe?
It did not.
It did not?
It, we, the pump station went down at about 7:00 in the morning. The pump station, because of its size, because of the design, that is, in my opinion, deficient in the ability to move any water that leaks in the pump, in the pump station, rapidly filled up, excuse me, within 15 minutes. And when it rapidly filled up, it rapidly went over the top of three motors. So by the time we got there, which was less than 15 minutes, the motors were submerged. We were able to stop the leak, no problem, but the motors were not usable. We had two spare motors in our inventory. We put the two spare motors in, and the pump station was back in service 12 hours later. But we limped along for that 12-hour period, well, during that period of time, that 12-hour period, the entire line was shut down. At 6:00 PM on Friday, we reestablished flow, and we operated at 80% of flow for Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Saturday, Sunday, and half of today.
I was going to ask a question of, with our two storage tanks, if it wasn't pumping, how much of a loss did we have?
Yes.
In the two tanks? Because I assume they were not at 100% of capacity, somewhere less than that.
They were about 85% capacity at 6:30 on Friday morning, and they dropped down to about 35%. The lowest was 35% this morning. We still had a significant amount of water. Had we not had those two tanks, if we didn't have Neri, and we would have been obviously very short with the tankage that was here eight or 10 years ago.
So just bringing up a subject of perhaps down the future, we should look at a third million-gallon tank to further guarantee that we would have a secure source of water in such an emergency, should it happen again, and I'm sure it will of some nature.
Right. Yeah, you're absolutely correct. Another million-gallon tank, I estimated that going, in keeping in mind that the temperatures were 105, 106 all weekend, they're going to be like that, and we were losing about 5% or 10% a day. We could have gone another few days, which would have pushed us into a five- or six-day minimized flow, but summer lasts a lot longer than five or six days. So another million gallons would certainly be beneficial.
And as long as we're on the subject, though, I wanted to ask, I just want to make sure that, in your opinion, would having a third million-gallon-plus tank be more beneficial than a possible temporary limited connection on, I think it's roughly 56th Street and Carefree Highway, and, which would be to Scottsdale, and then roughly around 48th Street and Carefree Highway around the Fryes, which would be a Phoenix connection? My recollection is that would be very limited for a short term, and that would be it.
That's exactly right. The Phoenix system, if we were to have an interconnect, would not allow us any more than 400, 500 gallons per minute. That's, if it's just the interconnect that we're looking at as an emergency supply, Phoenix could give us that sort of water for three or four hours at that rate. So in order to have a sustainable amount of water, we'd have to have the interconnect and another tank of a million gallons on whatever site where we were interconnecting.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Quick question, with regards to the golf course. Would they be better off with a tank? Since the ponds don't work anyway?
They would be better off with their own well, because what we're sending to them is water that we're either, it's part of an allocation of CAP water, or part of a treatment process that happens on a daily basis. So the reality is that the eight, the seven to nine percent of the daily production that goes over there is a significant part of our water resource on an annual basis. They get 330 acre-feet a year of sea, or I'm sorry, wastewater treatment.
Right.
And then they get another 75 or 80 million gallons of water from the treatment plant. So typically, a golf course of that size and that magnitude as far as grassland would have their own well.
If they have water under them?
Yes, exactly.
Yep.
We had had discussions with the owner about some of the turf areas that really don't need to be turf. Have they, you know, if they've made any moves toward that?
I don't. I don't have a really good history. As a matter of fact, I haven't walked the course. Someday, maybe I'll play some golf over there, but I haven't seen the course to know. I've talked to people who say that it appears that the entire course is watered abundantly.
Yeah, I recognize, looking at a map, about four or five acres that actually didn't need turf. If you hit the ball there, you really ought not be on the course to begin with.
Just do a Google map, and you'll see it.
I did that.
You don't even have to go there.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions from council? Well, there is public comment on this. I'm sure Mr. Morris is going to get up and talk to us.
Mr. Morris?
How was that guess, I think, for crying out loud? I must be psychic.
Well, first of all, it's obvious that there is a lot of progress being made. So on the project area, I don't think anybody could be, listen to this presentation and not be impressed with the amount of work being done. Some of it maybe should have started a long time ago, but that's not the people here. And so I just give them all the credit in the world for getting after these projects, especially the SCADA system, Rancho Manjana. I mean, there's just a lot of good things in this report that we ought to like. There are some things that are missing. You all know that I had significant input into the water policy, the general plan, and again and again, five years ago, this council, previous council, approved performance management measurement. That's not happened. What's missing from this are graphs and tables, real information. There was a revolution in America, starting 40 years ago, when Peter Drucker of California, the father of modern business management, really said this, "If it's not measured, it's not managed." And that is universally, repeatedly in business, if that's the way business runs today. Things are measured. Call center, times, all sorts of things are measured. I'm going to point out three things that are really important that I would like to see as soon as possible, that presented not only to the council, but frankly, the staff cannot manage those areas unless they know these numbers. One is water loss. Rancho Manjana is not new. It was identified five years ago when Councilman Smith was on the Water Advisory Committee. It's a longstanding problem. We still don't know the true extent of it. Last I heard, we did not have meters to measure some of those things. That information's a few months old. The second one, another high-profile area, will serve letters. That issue was identified two years ago, six months ago, and on December 17th, I believe, the water policy was put into effect that specified that we would be managing the will serve letters and finding out how much water we had, how much we had promised, how much we were using, so we can make plans for the future. Where's it going? When do we need to start worrying about it? That's not in this presentation. The third thing is grease. There is money in the CIP because grease in the sewer has caused damage to the sewer system. That program gets started, and then it's killed. Gets started, and it's killed. Gets started, and it's killed. Why? Because there's no measurement. I really urge this council to insist that grease, will serve letters, and water losses, as a minimum, be presented in graphical form, so you can see where you've been and where you're going. Or maybe in the case of the will serve letters, it ought to be in a spreadsheet-type of form. But those things are missing, and they really should be in here. I'm going to point out once again that this is the way modern business is managed. And these are three absolutely critical areas that the town needs to get a handle on, and not only manage one time with one project, but manage forever. Put it on automatic pilot, and let it go into the future where everybody can see what's going on. Thank you.
That's all? Okay. Moving right along. Mr. Sims?
You have three items, two items or two ordinances, number three.
Thank you.
And, pardon?
I was going to say thank you to them.
Are we going to let them leave?
Sure. Well, getting going is getting going. Good report.
Before addressing items three and four, I'd like to give you a short briefing as to how we got here. As you recall, and as Mr. Morris pointed out, you and the WAC worked together to develop a water policy last December. At that, after you adopted that policy, you asked staff to develop the framework of an ordinance that because it was amending the zoning ordinance, would have to go through Planning and Zoning Commission. I developed an ordinance that was kept with the theme of the water policy, that was fairly generic and giving you a great deal of flexibility. You have language before you tonight authored by the commission, and Bob Vors is here, and Ian and I have talked about this, that really does advance the ball. It provides a great deal of more specificity, and generally, specificity going forward is better because it brings clarity. Your job, however, is to balance that specificity versus the consequences of lack of flexibility. The language that I drafted gave you flexibility. The language that the commission drafted gave you specificity and clarity. So the question becomes how to measure that balance. And we've had four events occur, some only in recent days, that we would need to brief you on, so that you could measure and determine that balance. Of the four, only one we can talk publicly, and I will. It was the Hamilton Inn, Hamilton Inn?
Hampton.
Hampton Inn. Poor Bob, I couldn't remember that name today. Hampton Inn was before planning and zoning last Thursday. And the product was really quite good. The Hampton lawyer argued that because they had a will serve letter, and again, this is all public, so I can give you the facts of this factor. Their lawyer argued that they had a will serve, and therefore, that was for a subdivision, and that therefore, they were entitled to water. And we and the commission and Ian took an opposite view, and pointed out correctly that once they converted it to a commercial enterprise, they lost that will serve. The lawyer finally gave in, and before the commission last Thursday acknowledged that they would indeed agree to bring water, but with some clarification and conditions. As Bob and I discussed earlier today, if this ordinance would be in place, you wouldn't have the ability to accept that. And so that's just one of four. Let's go to the other three, that I'm going to ask you what you'd like to do. Thankfully, this is one of the first council meetings in like months that we didn't have an e-session. And, but because we didn't have an e-session, I can't brief you on the other three. And what I'm going to end up by saying is, you're welcome to go ahead and consider the first read, or alternatively, table it, and at the next session, we can have an e-session to discuss Hampton more specifically, and to discuss the next three. One, we just found out today that Cave Creek Resorts and Casitas are now requesting a modification to the will serve. And it's not clear, under the clarifying, more specific ordinance language that the commission drafted, how you would respond. We can talk about that in e-session. More importantly, thirdly, with Phoenix, Kerry has, in recent days, even I think this morning, meeting with and talking to City of Phoenix officials, as the City of Phoenix is taking some very assertive positions regarding property owners in your jurisdiction, but in their service area. And Kerry has been working with them to try to negotiate alternatives. Frankly, some of the alternatives that Kerry and I have been discussing would have been prohibited under the new ordinance, something I mentioned to Bob. Something we can talk about with you in e-session, so you can then decide that balance between specificity and clarity versus flexibility. And the Phoenix, the third one, that Phoenix does also begin to lay a foundation, possibly a trap, concerning how you negotiate with Carefree, as they then begin to say to you how they want to buy your system, when you're negotiating with Phoenix, how to buy their system. So I'd like to talk about that in e-session. Bottom line, I think the Planning and Zoning Commission advanced the ball significantly. They did a good job of providing greater specificity. They did that in recent weeks, about six weeks, but in that six weeks, we've had these new events occur that provide a good sort of test to see what it is we want to do. You get to make the final decision. And again, there's that balance between specificity and certainty and clarity versus flexibility. And I think the four factors, the four matters I just described, Hampton, Cave Creek Resorts, the Phoenix service area, and then the eventual negotiations we have with Carefree, all provide a good test bed to see if you want the greater specificity. Bottom line, it's your call, not mine. We can go ahead and consider this tonight, but then I, or my recommendation is, before you actually have to vote, is I'd like to have the opportunity to brief you on the negotiations Kerry's been having with Phoenix, the negotiations we're having with Cave Creek Resorts, the ramifications it might have with Carefree, and then to talk about positively how the commission worked in getting Hampton Inn to agree to bring water, that perhaps would not be permitted with the rigidity of the current code. So the action tonight would be either to go ahead and consider this as a first read, or table it to consider at the next council meeting with an e-session before, so we can go through those four sort of tests to see how you want to strike the balance between clarity and flexibility.
Mayor, may I ask a question, please?
Sure.
Why doesn't it go back to the Water Advisory Committee? Why were they not in this loop?
Well, they did the water policy.
Yes, but now it's being altered, or?
Well, it's not, I don't know that it's being altered.
It could be. So why were they not put in?
Well, they're advisors, and?
Like the commission is.
The action, I was responding to the action that I had from you. The action I heard from you was develop an ordinance and send it to Planning and Zoning. I did it, and wait, let me finish. And I did it, so I don't think I needed to talk to WAC, because I did it in higher conformity with the water policy, so I didn't think necessary. But they're your advisors, and if you want to look them in, that's perfectly fine.
I would recommend that we table it until we get the information and have an e-session, so we know which way we would be going with all the information.
Don't be surprised, I completely agree with you. I've always said when we move too fast, we make mistakes.
I agree.
Can I add something to that?
Sure.
I probably would have suggested tabling it anyways. I have an issue with the word independent from, the statement, independent from the town water supplies. I don't think- I don't think that what we're talking about is having eternal independence from the town water supplies. I think what we would expect is that it would be blended into the town's water supplies and become part of our entitlement, essentially. What this says is independent from, and it doesn't ever go into anything saying, I think a better term would be other than existing town water supplies, or something like that, because independence is a concern to me.
That's a very good, see, that, that's exactly, the minute, see, I, I took the lacy way out. I, I took the flexible way out and just used the water policy. Your commission then went farther, and you raise a good point, Councilman Smith, that, that probably isn't a good word. And so, let's, let's take this opportunity to go ahead and go through this, and then have the e-session, get guidance from you as to how, and that, you raise a very good point, and Bob, Bob ran this past me, and I missed that. That's a very good point.
Thank you.
So, Councilman McGuire?
We, we have a very competent water lawyer, Gary Hayes, and will he be involved in trying to establish this balance?
Yes, he, he reviewed the, the draft that I submitted. Now, when, once I've seen this with Bob, I'm going to get Gary involved in looking at these as well.
Thank you.
Okay, so do we individually make motions to table three and four, or three and then go to four? Can we do both of it at the same time?
I have a feeling they travel together.
All right, all right. Can we have a motion from-
Some of.
To table, yeah, agenda items three and four, and we have second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes clearly have it, 7-0. Moving on to agenda item number five. Which is council discussion, possible action to restore the annual tradition of the Trailblazer Appreciation Award to recognize an outstanding Cave Creek resident for their meaningful contribution to the preservation of the Cave Creek culture, heritage, native habitat, and other historical and environmental attributes of our unique town. Placed on the agenda by Councilwoman Elrod and Councilwoman Wright.
I just wanted to bring it forward to see if the council was interested in doing something like this, the Trailblazers Award, because we have so many people in this community that do so much for us on a daily basis for years and years and years. If you've ever watched Bunny and Bill Allen-
Yeah.
...in a single weekend out cleaning up Schoolhouse Road. If it's 150, they're out. If it's raining, they're out. And we have a whole community like that. And in 1999, they did this Trailblazers Award, and I thought it would be very, it'd be an awesome opportunity, the council, to give back to some of the people in the community that we do appreciate what you do. So I just, Councilwoman Elrod and I brought it forward to see if there was an interest.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Question?
Vice Mayor.
Councilwoman.
Yes.
So, the, the last time it was done was 19 years ago from-
2009, yes.
I'm just curious, I, I agree with you. There's many, many, many people that contribute a lot of time and energy and talent to our community. How does one go about singling one out, out of such and a just a group of people to take part? It, it would be a Herculean task. Might not it be better to recognize a group or an organization that has gone above and beyond others? I just offer that as a question or comment.
Many, many communities do that. If you look at all the paperwork that was brought forward by staff, it's done on a regular basis. They pick, it's not a pick, it's a process where applications are made. You would, you would say, "My neighbor is so-and-so, I would like to put them in for this award." So that all have, would be determined first, but it wouldn't be an organization like the Kiwanis or something. This is more an individual award, a Trailblazers Award. They also had what they called a pioneer award, and I think it just sort of fell through the cracks, from what I understand, but it would not be a group award.
It would be chosen through applications.
There's a follow-up question. Would it require a lot of time that staff and our others would have to devote to this? And if so, might not that time be better devoted to the water company, the sewer company, the roads, so on and so forth? So maybe take me through that.
I think it's all part of the same process, okay? This gives awards to residents in our town who, let's say Bob Morris, I think he's gone. How much time has he put into this community, for example? And he's an expert in his field. There are many people like that, so, and it wouldn't have to, I don't think the staff would have to be involved at all. It could be a thing that the council, three people decided to work on it, two people from the community, they formed a group now, and they move forward. But there's many, many examples of ways to do it. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. It's been done over and over again in communities across Arizona.
Why, why have we gone 19 years without it being-
It fell through the crack, like the water, like the water, like the sewer, like the grease trap. The big, the big items fell through the crack, and this was a little item, and it fell through the crack.
Exactly. Why hasn't? Why hasn't? Why hasn't fallen through the cracks?
I assume that's a rhetorical question. I mean, I don't have an answer. I haven't been here 19 years.
No, specifically, because I wasn't paying attention in 1999, where it went, but it just seemed like such a great opportunity.
We have a wonderful community.
Notice that, that the, that the action item here is to actually put a work session so we could work out those details, so.
That's exactly it. The discussion we're having now is, is very valuable.
Whether we want to actually do it or not.
Yeah.
Well, there, there is, there is public comment, as I say, council's done. You, you good with that moving forward? I say, you good, are you good with moving forward, a public comment on this?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, because, because the action item doesn't, doesn't do it, it just gives us the opportunity to actually-
Oh, right, correct.
-actually go and discuss it, which is, do we have any?
Comments?
Well, well, we're back to council. Do we have a motion?
Some moved.
I think we need somebody to actually read that for us. Put your glasses on, please.
Motion, I can see now. Motion to place the Trailblazer Appreciation Award on a work session agenda to discuss award objectives, criteria, judging, data, and title.
I'm assuming that was a second that you had, Councilwoman Clancy?
Did, I, I'm sorry, but I was not listening at that moment. I was thinking about something else.
Councilwoman Elrod, you want to give us a second, please?
I will give you a second.
Well, but I, I wanted, can you repeat that? Because I, I thought maybe I heard something missing. I guess that's why I'm saying that.
Motion to place the Trailblazer Award Appreciation Award, I'm sorry, motion to place the Trailblazer Appreciation Award on a work session agenda to discuss award objectives, criteria, judging, date, and title.
That's it? Sounds good.
All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes clearly have it, 7-0. That concludes our festivities for this evening. Everybody have a nice week.